Hang on, this is not starting.
There it goes.
Oh yeah. I'd say. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Lynn. Slipping.
Need a motion to approve the minutes from previous meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from previous meeting.
Eric second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Bailey.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Real good.
Thank you.
So you got anything going on out there in public works?
Not a whole lot. Maybe a little bit. Another great winter storm. We give credit to the guys, everybody's really pitched in and helped out well and great team effort. It's been a cold one.
It does.
We've had some trouble with equipment gelling up and freezing up, but yesterday we had all seven graders gelled up and multiple trucks, but hey, we got them all back up and going yesterday and today's been a better day, so. Kind of give you a rundown, we did have a little accident, we had a vehicle pull out in front of us at 18th and Horton. One of our grader operators made contact with the vehicle. No injury or damage to us or our grader, but there was some damage to the other vehicle, so I'm just making you aware of that.
And is my understanding that they ran a stop sign?
They, that, yes, that's.
Good.
Yes, we had, we were headed north and they had a stop sign, so they were headed eastbound, so. Spreader box I talked to you about last time that had broke down, we got a few quotes, it's gonna be a little over five grand to fix, so we tore into it ourselves and the guys fixed it in-house and done a good job, so just let you know that. The one dump truck that we had to, the one Mack, or actually we had the three Macks that weren't operating, we're having trouble with the hydraulic units, thought it was the pump or this, that. The one, they changed the control valve inside, it's working very well, it has not shut down on us. The other two, can't say so much for them, but anyhow, we were scheduled to take one of them yesterday back down to High Specco and Joplin to get the valve replaced and it, but due to the weather, we postponed a week. We'll be taking one of them back on the 23rd and then when we go to pick it up, we'll take the other truck back, so we'll have all three of our Macks repaired and up and going. Just give you a heads up on that. Beth query, we pretty much have the overburden removed. We done it in-house internally. Guys done a good job, we got a little bit more to do, then we should be ready to go ahead and get a blast scheduled, so.
And that North side, it should have been pretty fairly clean, wasn't it, North side?
The North.
Had to move that berm probably a little bit.
Had to move the berm, yeah, and still had a little bit of soil to move, but.
When's her contract up, do you know?
I think it's pretty well.
We need to.
Yes.
We need to renew that.
Just gonna end your contract together.
Yeah.
We need to discuss it somewhat, so.
So we already said that you're gonna have to go west, right?
Yeah, we're gonna take a new legal description.
Yep.
Okay.
And the contract, and I've been advised there might be some negotiations on price, maybe we should consider, but it's an excellent quarry, so we should negotiate if we can.
Yeah.
It's good rock.
Yeah, I know everyone out there says that's.
Oh, excellent rock, yeah.
Excellent rock.
I just wish it was deeper, but it's not, but it's good rock.
Yep. Give you an update on the rock crusher, the motor went in last Friday, wasn't getting oil, or actually went in last Thursday, wasn't getting oil in the upper part, so they pulled the motor, took it back to the shop last week. Made contact with them yesterday to find out where we're at. They said depending on the storm, if they didn't get that much snow, they were gonna bring it down today, but we haven't heard from anyone, so I don't, I don't think they came today, so I'm hoping tomorrow or the next day we'll have the motor back, have it in and.
Looks like to me you can probably start crushing again next week.
Well, that's, yeah, get things dried out a little bit and thaw it out a little bit and get back to crushing, so.
Now, do you anticipate 30 days before your bath, or when do you think you'll be there?
That's a good question, Jim, I honestly can't answer that one right now at this time. Need to get up here and look and see exactly how much we got left and.
And we'll have to really, how to impact our asphalt season.
Right.
Because when we're on schedule, we're out of chips all the time.
Right.
So you're gonna be behind because of crusher.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we'll have to take that into consideration when we're talking to the city about doing their project, so.
Right, right, and we have talked some, maybe running a few longer hours or just what we can do to try and make up a little ground, because we know, we do realize we are behind, so.
No one's fault, but you.
Yeah, it just, yeah.
Yeah.
Ag engineering, are finalizing the report for Elm Creek Dam, the leak or what have you out there, so I thought I might have it today, but due to the weather and what have you, it'll probably be, I'll probably have it next week. I've kind of seen the preliminary report, but I should have the final report and be able to bring that to you hopefully by the next meeting, so you can have a copy of that. Commissioner Harris, I had a question.
Okay.
On this little second district, what book can we, can we find this in, you know, we've looked and worked to look.
The orange and the blue one.
The blue one?
And last year's also, the orange.
Okay, okay.
There's a page in there that says rehab or replace now.
Okay, okay.
So there's like, I think the orange one had 37 and the blue gained some, so, but you'll find that.
Okay.
Area one and area two also, and area three. Pretty good list.
Yep. We did get a preliminary report back from Schwab Eaton on some of the bridges that they done, but we don't have the final book from them yet, so.
Are they working on the ones with the big bridge up north?
I'm not for sure what exactly they're doing on that one. I thought they, there was a report done on it.
Year ago.
Year ago, yes, so.
And you should have at your possession somewhere.
Yeah, I don't.
Or Tommy's got it one.
Okay.
It was a pretty good description of what needed to be done.
Yeah, we'll have to look, do some more looking, maybe it's in these files in here.
It could be, and it gave two or three scenarios cost-wise of our option, options, so.
Okay. And then I have one more stop sign request, it's a yield sign, this one's actually a little bit further west than the one we had last time. This one's at 175th and Tomahawk. One at 195th has a solid cedar wall and you can't really see until you get there. The one at 175th that I would recommend changing from yield to stop is got a hill there and a big wide sweeping turn, and when you're coming from the west going east, you're just pretty much out there, and I think if it was a stop sign, you would have to stop and then proceed. I know yield, you're supposed to proceed with caution, but I would strongly recommend a stop sign there, I think there's been a couple, two or three accidents, and I think that would be a.
I would agree with that wholeheartedly.
However, it is, it is dangerous.
It is.
Just south of Hectons.
I think it was just right straight south of there, and you cannot see going north either.
Right, right.
Yep. So. We have to have a motion for that?
Yep, need a motion.
I'd make a motion to put change yield signs out at 175th and Tomahawk to stop signs, you're running east and west, north and south will remain as is.
Eric second?
I second that.
Any discussion?
No.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Anything for me?
What do you have on the big trucks? The old Mack and old Sterling, were we junking them?
Well, we haven't, we're still trying to get through this storm and what have you. I know the one that wrecked or what have you, we're trying to get somebody to give us an estimate on the trailer. We do have an estimate on the tractor, but not on the trailer yet. And then the other, is it Sterling?
Sterling, yeah.
We have, we're getting another estimate on, on that, so we know, do we want to look at repair, do we want to sell, what do we want to do for sure? So I do know there's an appointment for that one, but the weather caught us and we didn't get it up to take a look at, but that is on our radar and on our list to get something done with.
Good. That's all I have.
Anybody else, anything for me?
Thanks for taking care of all the people called.
No problem, no problem, so.
Been busy.
It has been a busy few days, and again, the guys have stepped up and done an outstanding job.
You know, at 6:30 last night, I was, the grader came by my place.
Right.
On 95th.
Yep.
So I'm sure he wasn't done then.
No, no, I think that grader was out to 7:30 or 8:00 last night, so several of them stayed out and once we finally got up and got unjelled and was able to run, they stayed out and wanted to hit some of the roads, so. And we're out of them right now, so anyhow, you gotta executive whenever you want to do it, we can do it later, or whatever you want to do, you just let me know.
This is for personnel?
Yes. Yep.
So how long?
I'd say probably 15 minutes.
Okay.
And I'd like to have Susan in there if we could, please.
At work, okay, I'm over at your session, executive session under KSA 7543-19, or 4319B1 to discuss personnel matters and non-electored personnel. And for 15 minutes, we will be leaving this room at 3:13 and be back at, what, 3:28?
It's fine.
All right?
Say who's gonna be there? Do we have to stake who's gonna be there?
Yeah.
And there'll be three commissioners, Eric and Susan. Here's second?
I second that.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Does your back just get better? You gotta go have something done to it.
It's getting worse setting.
Not good.
Just setting makes it.
All right, we're out of executive session, no action. Mr. Walker. Where'd he go?
I don't know. I sent him just a minute ago.
He was right here.
There he is.
So.
So.
What do we do first?
Here we go. Couple, couple of deals. Kendall's got that one. You got that contract. Kendall does?
The what? No, I don't have that. I have a copy of it.
Do we need to go into executive session?
Is it okay? We got that on down in June, so we'll, we'll do both at the same time.
That's fine.
Okay.
So, do I need to make a motion to go into executive session?
Yeah.
Do I need to make a motion to go into executive session, KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy according to job duties?
Yeah.
The three commissioners, Shane Walker. That it?
Meeks if he's.
And Justin and our county councilor.
And.
I don't have my cheat sheet. How much time do you need?
Ten minutes?
We will leave here and ten minutes, we'll resume at 3:33, or leave this room, come back to this room at 3:33.
Here, second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Pipes are breaking. Pipes are breaking. That's why I'm late. Did I get called in this one?
Yeah.
How'd you make it to that?
No. Okay. Back up. At 3:43 from executive session, I move that we come back into regular session.
Second that.
Any second?
Second.
Uh, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Push and carries, okay, for the action. Ilan, the executive session, we've asked Kendall to produce a resolution for a new IT position at a, at a certain wage of $32,000. And also, we've approved to participate in the apprenticeship program and move forward with, with that program and, and allow to go ahead and hire another person for the apprenticeship program. Right here, second?
I second it.
Second.
Go ahead.
I think, I just, I'm sorry I walked in on this a little late, but we want to make sure the general public understands what this intern program is. It's a, to help kids stay here in Bourbon County.
Right.
And there is a federal program that'll kick in, that'll help with monetary support of that.
And we were, we were.
Intern being hired.
It is.
We were approached by a couple, two individuals that, that have set up these apprenticeship programs. It's Lana, what's her last name?
Dave.
And who was the other gentleman from Kentucky?
Ervin.
Ervin.
It's hard to say his name.
Okay, well, anyway, anyway, they've, they've had successful apprenticeship programs and it's, we will be in conjunction with the federal program and the state program. And we will receive some funds for being participants in this program. And it's designed to, to help keep our young people in Bourbon County.
Lana is the ex-Secretary of Labor from here.
Alright.
For eight years. And Ervin was the Commissioner of Labor in Kentucky for twelve years. So, they're the ones who run this group.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Push and carries.
What about the tower?
Well, it's one of the. Here, that's your contract. Okay, so I can make a motion to, to the agenda. Twenty-two, because Bobby Reed also, you know, we're going to be around.
The what?
Bobby Reed.
Yeah. Okay, he has a lot too. So, there's no reason to do either one.
Alrighty. So. I move that we amend the agenda to remove Susan Bancroft's executive session and also Bobby Reed's executive session.
I second that.
Any discussion?
Once again, the reason they was removed from the agenda, they both have been resolved prior to the commission meeting commissioners. And so, they were both personnel matters, non-elected identifiable individuals, but those matters have been handled eternally and we will take the needed steps to resolve those issues. Just for the general public to know.
All favor?
Aye.
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 Push and carries. Alright. You call David.
I gotta get taking a phone call right quick.
Hello, David.
Hey.
You're up.
Okay.
Want to get by the microphone?
Sure.
Is it on? Little red light on?
Red light's on.
Okay, great.
Yep. You got another one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Listen to me bad?
Yeah.
Are we gonna get that to, to the new, new position yet?
Yes, we wait to explain this when Cliffing gets back.
Yeah, I'll just wait for Cliffing to give that.
Okay.
It's got proximity on it. It's got proximity on it. Sorry, guys.
I put some... There you go. Well, guys, what I came to you for, we need some work done on the elevator again. This is pertaining to the door edge, which is the part that is the like infrared that, you know, if someone steps through there, then it functions that way to keep them from being bumped. Well, it's quit. So, this is the prices that I've got. Cone A, of course, is the one that's taken care of us for years. Their price is as stated there, $8,674. And then this MEI is, I think, Minnesota Elevator, and they have different branches. This branch, the lady that came to see us was from Springfield, so, and their price is as shown there, $3,0789.28. There is other work that will probably have to be done to the elevator in phases. We've already done the first phase in hydraulics back in August, which was, you know, good to get that done, but there'll be other phases that need to be done as needed. Now, I think right now, the most pressing thing, safety-wise, is for this door edge, and so this is what I'm asking today for your consideration.
I have a question. There's a $5,000 spread. Do you know why?
I do not, Jim. They both came and looked at it, and then they supposedly...
That seems pretty significant.
Yeah, it is.
Quite a difference.
Quite a difference.
I was shocked, too, you know.
Well, sometimes people don't see the whole picture, don't bid it correctly. That's why I asked that, if they missed something, but if you're comfortable with it.
Well, there's actually no, to me, there's no description on the cone there.
On Cone A or...
Yeah, Cone A. It just says total price.
Actually, on...
Was there? Oh, there it is.
Yeah, it is. It's, yeah. And then also, there was a few more pages of explanation, or not explanation, just signature and...
Have you looked at them? They're both comparable on the work performed?
Yes, it seems to be, as far as I can tell, guys.
Okay.
So, you have a recommendation?
Well, I honestly don't know anything about the MEI company, to be honest. I do Cone A because they've taken care of us for years, you know? That's all I can tell you. I mean, they seem to do good work and...
Well, I know the last time we went through this, they were still basically the low bid, when we had the hydraulics put in.
Right, yes, that's right.
So, that's not the case on this one.
Right, right, that's right. That's right. Of course, it was a bigger job, too, but...
Yeah, it was a big job.
But...
I don't know, don't see if it'd probably hurt anything to try it.
Well, that's...
Yeah, for $5,000, that's not a lot of work, and they both explain what they're going to do, so we can expect what the results should be.
Yes, exactly. That's kind of how I saw it, Jim.
I'm looking them up.
I think it's Minnesota Elevator.
And you're good with either one for your review?
As far as I can tell, Jim.
Yeah, okay.
Like I said, I've never had any experience with it, but...
MEI Elevator New York, so they've been around.
Yeah, there's a lot of different branches that, I don't know, I can't remember how long they've been in business, but I think it's quite a while.
Inviting Elevator Maintenance and Repair for Kansas University in Lawrence. Well, I entertain a motion to approve MEI.
I'll make a motion to approve the work evaluation repairs on our elevator from MEI Total Elevation Solutions for the price of, I see it on here, $3,789.28, and my motion would include the chairman signing an agreement.
Your second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Plant, is that right?
I made it right on time.
You did.
Have to take my glasses off because I thought too much. There's a couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention. One thing is that we have asked for an extension to the mailing of our March 1 valuation notices. We've requested a 15-day extension. I should know probably by tomorrow, but that's usually just a given that they will grant that. With COVID and everything delayed, I mean, we ran up right to the end of the year just doing the things that we normally have done by the end of October. So, we've been pushing it really hard. I'm hoping we'll, we've asked for the 15th of March, but we can get it, if we can get it out sooner, we will. We've done it at least once before, and generally, at this point, it's not going to cause any problems with future deadlines of getting things to the different offices and so forth, that they can meet their deadlines as well, so, because we have enough time in the hearing time period that we have to usually get that done. So, I wanted to let you know that that was going to be necessary today. The other thing is that over the past several years, we've been taking any remainder that I have in my annual accounts and moving it into a reserve fund. This past year, that proved very helpful, having that reserve fund, because when we came up needing a vehicle replaced, we were able to do that out of that reserve fund. So, what I would like to request is any remaining amounts to the 2020 be moved into that reserve fund, and that's generally something I've done every year about this time, is make that request.
They just get with Susan, she, they get with Susan Bancroft, and she will make that happen.
Okay, so...
And it has to go through the audit.
Will that, will that have to come from you and, or from me, or what?
Oh, I don't know if we have to. Do we have to approve those, Susan?
Sorry, I was out of the room when you were asking.
He wanted to take whatever he had left over in reserve and put it in capital improvements.
You guys will need to approve and transfer.
Okay, so I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to transfer the capital proof.
Reserve.
The reserves, as said by Mr. Anderson.
When can I approve?
Into... Yeah?
This is one of the funds that is, the beginning cash balances was not correct, so, something that you and I probably ought to get together on.
Probably need to know how much.
By $30,000, but it was just, it was just in between the Appraisers Fund and the Appraisers Reserve Fund, so they, it's really, it's a...
Probably need a cap.
Yeah, so we probably, we need to get together before we, you guys make a motion on what can be transferred, and then I'll, we'll revisit the number.
Okay.
That sounds like a...
That sounds great.
Excellent.
I'll send that motion.
Do you want to set a time? Do you want to come by my office or...
We need a second, so we're good. Motion, for lack of a second.
Okay, today or when?
I can do that, yep.
Or when's best for you?
Let me just come by here in a little bit.
Okay.
Sound good? What time do you leave? Five?
Thank you.
4:30.
But I, you need more time than that?
No, no, let me look at what I got here, and then I'll let you know.
All right. We have a land sale contract that we need to sign, and Shane, do you want to explain a little bit about it, or...
I mean, if you have to, but legal, sir.
And so can Justin. Justin, and this is one that we approved early on, and within sales is now final, and it'd been signed by the landowners, and so it's...
We had been having some communications issues with fire and police and sheriff due to the Garland area being a problem with the radios. So, we had looked at a place where we could lease space to connect the internet back down to Garland instead of relying on cell phone services. We couldn't find anything, you know, nothing popped up, and Whisper Internet decided to get rid of a tower east of town that they were no longer going to utilize. So, they offered to sell it to us for $1,000, which, it's a 300-foot tower. It's going to cure a 10-year problem that's been going on, plus it'll give us the ability to possibly get NewWave or other companies to be able to get internet to people that live out there that are having issues trying to get internet, because the east part of the county is probably one of the more underserved areas, same with the northwest.
And not, and not, just a quick interjection on two issues. One, this was a safety issue that Shane's been working on before any of us got, I mean, I think Jim might have been working here, but the rest of us, this was a safety issue that's been going on for quite some time. This is going to be some duality involved, too. The city of Fort Scott is going to get involved, because they have the same problem with some dead zones on the eastern part of the city limits. So, there's some benefits there. And then the second part is an economic development sector that wasn't really initially discussed or was not even a concern when Shane started looking into this and contacting me about the possible, possibility of the county buying this tower, but it just kind of fell into our laps a little bit. And the people that live on the east side of town, especially, you know, 240th Street East, they know how bad modern services are, so hopefully we can hit a homerun with that, too. But the repeater issue is a very, very big concern, and on some levels, we might have to go into executive session if we want to talk too much more about that, but...
Right, so the other part of that is, too, is that when we were looking for leasing, and if you do, what the leases was going to cost us over time, 10, 10 years...
Shane's got that broken down.
Yeah, if we would have got someone to do the lease, that the average lease for that kind of stuff's around $300 a month for, to be on a tower, buying this and the land and fencing it versus leasing would save us about $12,500 over the course of 10 years, or it'll save us about $49,000 over the course of 20. And this tower, according to the people that have inspected it, I mean, it's got a 20, 25-year life, easy, especially once the microwave dishes are taken down. It should last long past all the bugs.
And actually, a private citizen brought this tower to our, I guess, brought it to our attention a couple of years back about how it didn't, it wasn't lit up, it doesn't have a red light on the top or, you know, plain designation, so we're actually helping with a safety issue there, too. So, we'll be able to have that lit up correctly and have it with the bright lights and things like that, so there's a kind of three birds with one stone.
So, I make a motion that we sign the land contract and also the contract with Whisper, the previous owner of the tower. Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And this also includes me signing the contract.
You know, just for some more public knowledge, we're not going to be making any money off of an internet provider, that we're going to be trading out those services, because we need the internet to get the repeaters to work correctly and to ensure that the loop is done right, so that when the time comes, they can call in on the cell phone, right, Shane? I mean, that's, that's part of this deal, too, is that if we're going to have some trade out...
The way they have digital repeaters now, they rely on an internet connection to get it back to the main hub.
Right.
Well, Garland's the only one that's not on a true internet connection. It's always been on a, like a Cradle Point router that's on Verizon. And I mean, anybody that's got cell phone service down by Garland knows that half the time it works, half the time it doesn't. This just allows us to have a direct point-to-point connection, build the internet there at that time.
Is this going to fix a dead zone between Fort Scott-Pittsburgh?
I doubt that.
Because that's awful. Yeah, right by Garland is where my cell phone drops.
Shane, I'll add, I talked to some residents that live in that area, very excited about the possibility of internet.
I would be, too.
You know, we've talked about with NewWave, they're one of the wireless providers around here, you know, working out an agreement with them, similar to what we've done with Crockhand. They're going to provide us a service, and in turn, we're going to allow them to locate on that tower, and then it would also allow them to do the regular maintenance on the tower, like the bulbs, things like that. That'll be part of the agreement.
No, I think it's a great deal for the county.
I do, too.
I do. And maybe they're working on it for quite a while.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Years.
Thank you, Shane. Been a busy few days.
Yeah, a little bit.
Oh, Will. How are you?
Will attended a meeting yesterday, wasn't he? Time going pretty fast with the city in Uniontown. It was pretty humid, and I was, I was there with the public participant.
Yeah, Susan's here.
Listening, and Will can fill you in on everything he learned.
Yeah, we got a, oh, I don't know how much time I have, but...
All the time in the world.
All the time in the world, okay. I guess this, this thing is a haunt. This could be a while.
Oh, it'll be a while. Oh, good God.
This could be a long time. You guys, you brought your sleeping bag and extra meal and...
I'm leaving the lap, push your hair.
I'm sorry.
Well, anyway, it all stemmed from this latest storm we had come through our area.
Yeah, and the severe cold weather.
Severe cold weather.
Yeah, which is like number, ranks number two in 120 years. That's how severe that weather was and is. But anyway, on Monday about noon, I received a call from KDEM, Kansas Division of Emergency Management, informing me and, of course, come to find out, 22 other counties as well, that the natural gas conservation, if you want to call it that, and accumulation that most towns, small towns, like Uniontown, have procured, and they buy this in the summertime, and they get it at a decent price, okay? Needless to say, that is gone. Their reserve is totally gone. The company, KMGA, is a company that is a broker, and they buy the product for these 22 counties, and within them 22 counties, there's 32 small towns, such as Uniontown. But then there's other larger towns that go with that, starting with the city of Garnett. Let's see, in Lynn County, there's La seen, Lewisburg, and that's just to name a few, okay?
Yeah, a lot of it was on there, too, I believe.
No, not...
I saw one there.
No, but most of these, most, Lewisburg is on there.
Right.
Burlingame, Osage City, I can give you a copy of this if you all want.
Oh, yeah.
But anyway... So Uniontown, needless to say, was very nervous after I called and talked to, started with Sally Johnson. And then met with her, Larry Jurgensen, and did, they did talk to Brett Howard. There was another individual there that takes care of their public works, if you want to call it utilities, I guess I should say. And then another member of their, their board. We met for, and Lynn was there.
Just a casual observer.
Yeah, well, yeah, he had some good input. But anyway, they, the situation is this, and it was. They're on a day-to-day natural gas supply to all of their people. They got 126 gas meters in that town. And it's on a day-to-day, I talked to Sally this morning. And just to kind of get an update on where they're at, they were going to have another meeting today at 3:00. And I said, now, if something goes south on you, you please call me, okay? But other than that, I said, don't call me if it's, no news is good news, right? So that's, that was kind of our agreement, okay? The situation though, is if they run out of natural gas and then there's no heat, where do they all go? So they, first I targeted, which is, is a target and is a center that Della Numbar and I have an agreement on, is to use the, the firehouse as a warming shelter, okay? Well, can't do that because their furnaces run on natural gas and so does their generator, okay? So that really kind of kicked up a, a problem. So after talking to Sally a little bit on Monday afternoon and kind of her and I back and forth a little bit on the deal, she, she said, and she thought, and she did confirm this, that the elementary school there is the large areas are heated with electric. Now, she confirmed that with Brett Howard.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
And they, they have heat pumps?
Yes, yes. So if we had to set up a warming shelter, and that's one of the things that on, on, as a matter of fact, on Monday, when I got the call from, from KDEM, that was one of the questions. And then later on, I had to fill out a survey of exactly what I had, where to go and all this kind of stuff. So we've identified the, the elementary school as a place for them to go to if they have to. That way they don't have to leave town and so on and so forth. They could keep their pets at home and, you know, and hopefully everything will be fine. There is light at the end of the tunnel, by the way, and you probably all have seen this, by the weekend, okay? But they're still not out of the woods, even though it's going to get warmer. The problem is this. The price of the fuel, and of course, they haven't been given this yet, but they know that it's going to be somewhere around 100 to 120% increase, okay? Which is, would be so devastating, it wouldn't even be funny. And of course, Larry and Sally both were saying, you know, a lot of people, first of all, they, they won't even be able to afford it, okay? And if you're on fixed income, it makes it even worse. So one thing led to another. And I think we kind of, I kind of, I did get the drift right away that, you know, there's definitely a serious situation there. Well, I called my regional coordinator with KDEM and explained this to him. He had already told me that down in, in La Bette County, the city of Altamont, and if you've watched the news, it was on there actually last night, they are, they have already told people, reserve your fuel, all kinds of things. They have sheltering facilities in play. But of course, once again, this co-op has said, and this is what I found out today, that they are going to continue to make sure that, that the natural gas flows through the lines. Southern Star would be the one that would supply the fuel to Uniontown. And that's really where my focus is at. But they would, they would supply the, the natural gas to them. Of course, it's going to be at a much, much higher rate. And that's where Uniontown said, you know, that's our bread and butter, okay, okay? And not being, you know, really having the ability to say anything to them on how to manage this, how to, what to do about the money situation or whatever. The light that came today to me was we declare the county. One, just so you know, one individual city within a county cannot declare anything. What they, what happens is, is the county declares. Then, once the, the declaration goes to the state and the state compiles them all and everybody meets their thresholds, then they send a letter to FEMA Region 7 Headquarters in Kansas City. They critique that letter and then they send it on to the president, okay? If he signs it, then it comes back, the declaration is signed, it's in place. Now, two different types of declarations. Public assistance is one for roads, bridges and so on and so forth. The individual assistance one is the one I really hope that they can get. Can't guarantee it, okay? Can't even guarantee the public assistance because they don't look at financial hardships. They don't look at any financial impact on a city, okay? But if they look at a budget, and this is what I told Sally, you take your budgets from the last three to four years and show how much money you've put into, that you set aside and you make purchase for a natural gas, okay? And now all of a sudden, it's gone due to the weather. But you have this immense, huge amount of fuel that you're going to have to start buying at a dollar that's way up there. Here's where you're at, okay? You're going to have to show the difference, okay? That, yes, it's a financial impact, but it's also something that not only would it affect the city of Uniontown, but all the residents there. So in order to convince, and this is really what KDEM is all about and what they're trying to work with all these 22 counties, which includes us, is we need to declare. Everybody needs to declare to start. So what I have in front of you, and Lynn, if you'll sign it and then just pass it around, is the declaration.
Well, I've got to have Kelly put a resolution.
Yes, she'll give a resolution.
I have a question.
But if you got questions, I'm sure you got questions, go for it.
Governor Kelly signed a state of emergency already.
Yep.
Yesterday and the day before.
Right.
So what does that have to do with this?
It's a false.
She does that so that, that's kind of like the starting of the whole thing, okay? Then each county, just like the COVID deal, okay? Each county then, if they have a problem, they have situations, whatever, then they get their emergency manager to prepare this document that you have in front of you. And then you sign it and put that resolution number on there. And then I scan it and send it to email through what they call Web EOC. And that's the document receiving portion of KDEM. And needless to say, the city of, I was asked earlier, the city's got all kinds of damages, okay? Assault, you know, whatever, overtime, this, that and the other. The county's going to be in the same boat, okay? Now, one way or the other, this is, this is the approach. This is what we've been told, all 22 counties. We've been told this is the only approach to it. You sign this declaration for extreme severe cold weather emergency declaration, okay? And then it, it don't take nothing to hit our threshold, okay? I mean, I don't remember the exact number figure, but it's nothing, okay? So once I send this to the state, then the state accumulates all those. The state has a threshold that they have to meet. But that's how you get the ball rolling. Jim, do you have one?
You'd mentioned Uniontown would have a higher cost possibly when reached up on either gas. Does that apply to Fulton, Bronson, Fort Scott?
No, no.
Just Uniontown?
Just Uniontown because they, they are, they use this KMGA, okay? Which is that, I, I don't remember what they, but it's, but it's a broker that literally sells to them. Now, they're, they're more of a middleman. But the way they do it is these 20, these 32 towns that are out there, okay? That's on this list right here. They all put in, say, to, let's say you own KM, KMGA. Jim, here you go. We're, we're from Allen County, Humboldt, okay? They say we need, I don't know, 100 gallons, you know, I mean, I'm just throwing some numbers out there. Then the city of Anderson County, city of Garnett. Everybody puts in their bid for how much natural gas they want them to buy, this KMGA. So it's a co-op and everybody puts in their bid and then they make the buy, okay? Now, I'm sure they make a buy bigger than just what they, what they told them. If they wanted 100,000, they probably 120, 110, a little buffer. I don't know how they do it, but that's the, that's the basics that I, I understood. But that's how it all comes about. So then you got this big pool of money that these people have, then they go buy the fuel. Everybody's, everything's fine, Danny, till you get something like this, which is a disaster staring us right in the face. And these people, I'm telling you, the citizens out there, there is no way. Sally did some math and she told me, Will, there ain't no way, nobody here will be able to pay for this natural gas. Because it's an inflated price right now.
I asked that question because other cities such as Fulton, Bronson, Fort Scott, we're going to get high gas bills, we're going to get high electric bills. Anything we can do to help those folks? I mean, it's going to double for the use that we've been going through. Is there anything we can do to help those folks? There's a lot of senior citizens need help here, their gas, electric bills.
Well, and, and that's, that's a really good question. But I, the situation that these guys are in is a lot different than us. Let's say I get gas from Atmos, okay? Runs right there in front of the house. And, and you're buying it year-round, that you're already on the line, you know, it's kind of like the electric companies in a way, okay? You're there, yeah, it's going to go up, okay? But nothing.
The price is going to go up.
Nothing like these people, nothing, not even close.
I don't know because I know there's been a shortage of natural gas right now. So I don't know what the supply and demand figure is right now. Because I'll guarantee you that I had my tank filled before this, before the weather hit about a week. And the price went from 95 to a dollar 69.
Wow.
So, so it's, it's out there everywhere.
Yeah.
So it might be a good idea for you to, to poll all these other cities and find out if we're going to experience any dramatic changes.
Well, here's the deal. The way that works is, and, and I explained this to Susan just a minute ago. She wanted to know if the city of Fort Scott needed to get on board with this disaster. I said, yes. Said, because you have damages, okay? You have things that, now, once again, FEMA changes the rules every five minutes, okay? I'm here to tell you, was there for 12 years. So I know how they play the game. But, but the kicker is, just like I've told, I told Dave Bruner, I told Bailey, you know, I'm willing to sit down with anybody, as I did back a couple of years ago there, and say, here's what you need to do. You need to look at your budget. You need to see how much money you normally budget for whatever it might, fuel for your trucks, road salt, whatever. If it's gone crazy and blown way out of proportion, then that's what you need to document right there, okay? We can do the same thing with an incorporated city as per the question Jim has.
How's that any different though for me living out in the county on my own?
You are an individual. That's where I was, now, there's.
How's that any different? They're individual, I mean, I'm not, I'm just playing devil's advocate here.
Yeah, I know you are.
Because somebody's going to ask the question. They're no different than the individuals at Uniontown.
Right, here's the deal.
Absolutely.
Here's the deal.
Or Susan, or Lynn, or you.
Yeah, exactly. We are, and we would call, if we get, if, there's two different types of declarations, basically. Individual assistance and public assistance. Public assistance is one that takes care of roads, bridges, buildings that belong to the, the county, so on and so forth, okay? The individual assistance branch used to, years ago, and I'm talking six, eight, 10 years ago, it was pretty easy to get one, okay? Now, for the most part, it requires multiple deaths and lots of people displaced. In other words, homes totally destroyed by a tornado. And I'm not talking about a dozen or two. I'm talking about 20 or 30 plus. And then you have to get, either bring in housing or whatever. If we were to get the individual assistance program, that's going to open it up for everybody in this room, okay? Not the courthouse itself because it's on the public assistance branch. But, but they would award both. The public assistance always happens. I mean, it's just, it's almost a given, okay? But the individual assistance side is extremely difficult to get. And if you don't get it, it won't pay a penny for those people out there. But what it would do is it would give money, now, once again, I can't say this for a fact, but within reason. The whole purpose behind it is to be able to help that city out. And they absorb the cost with the monies that they receive from the federal government. And that way, they don't have to pass the buck on to the individuals. Because that's really where they're staring at right now. They're, they're, they're looking at right down the barrel. Right here's from city of La seen, okay? Doug Bartlett sent this to me, okay? That's what they're going to have to do. Those people up there on the very edge of literally, and they don't even have a place to, to house people in Lynn County. They have no warming shelters whatsoever. They got to go to either Miami or as far north as Johnson County to find a warming center.
Another question, Will.
Yeah.
I think it's great, Uniontown, we're going to go through this and help those folks. But I think we need to look at some kind of assistance for all cities, maybe low to moderate income people because their gas bill's going to be double, electric bill's going to be double. It's going to be hard on these folks. I mean, if there's an opportunity out there through the federal government to help these folks, we should look at it.
Yeah.
I hope.
Yeah.
We would agree to that.
I think this is a, I think this is a starting point.
Yeah. If we can get, like I said, if, if they can get the, the individual assistance one, then they'll definitely get some help, okay?
So are we asking for that though also?
We don't ask for anything.
We just do this?
We just do that.
Emergency declaration.
Okay.
We do this and then that, that sets our county in, in play.
Okay.
Okay? And, and then we, the state puts together, you know, because this is, there's a lot of folks on this right here. I mean, a lot of them. And, and so it's, it's really going to be, and I'm serious about this. It's really going to be how the state crafts the letter and puts the verbiage in there to show FEMA Region 7 how important they need an individual assistance program. Now, there are warming shelters already out there. I can go, I go into Web EOC and I see them, where they're set up, how many people they've had, so on and so forth, okay? So, you know, here we have Buck Run, okay, number one. Number two, and this is something that I think, this is probably not the right time to talk about, but if we buy Mercy or we get Mercy Hospital, if, we're not going to, it's not.
No, we're not doing, we're not there, any kind of, of coordination with Mercy will go through Mercy, period.
Okay, I'm talking about after we get it. If it's sitting there like it is right now.
We're not going to talk about that.
Okay, well, we won't. I'm just. I'm just saying, I think that that'd be, but anyway, neither here nor there, okay? Right now.
That's not up for discussion at this present time.
But, but, but just having a warming center is big, you know, okay? It's really big. Because the, just like Jim said, you got a lot of people out there that can't afford, you know? If they have to drop, if they have to shut their gas off and leave, you know, where are they gonna go?
Well, that's important, that's worth it. Important to identify all the, all the damage caused by this, this cold snap.
The rolling blackout that's been going on is the other side, ugly side of this coin as well.
Just like, uh, our keeper of the door told me that they were out for five hours.
Yeah.
And that wasn't a rolling blackout.
No.
And I know that affected more than their household. It affected that whole area out in that, that part of the county.
Yeah, the problem with them rolling blackouts that they have determined and discovered is once they shut them off and they go to bring them back online, it breaks things, okay? That's just putting it just real simple. It breaks things. So anyway, so with this signed, I send it up and it's a done deal. And we just wait and see what happens with FEMA and if they agree to do this.
Can you use your influence or your experience to help get maybe the local help? Or is the personal?
What, what do you mean by that?
Man, I like to see it more than just Union Town. I, I like to see it more than just Union Town. I think that's great, but I think we got Fort Scott and other cities to worry about also.
Well, they're gonna all, they, they all have, all of these townships that are incorporated, not part of the county, but they're incorporated, they can become applicants. Once we get any type of disaster, if it's public assistance, they, they get that applicant. Individual assistance, that's when they set up what they call a D R C, Disaster Recovery Center. That's when individuals come in and say, well, here's my bills from such and such, and, and here's, here's what I got in the bank, and, you know? And I'm, and I'm having to keep my temperature set at fifty-five or fifty-eight degrees, you know? I mean, to know how that'll unfold is, is, is difficult. But that's how that side of the coin works on the individual assistance side. But once we get this declaration pushed in place, then that will, that'll start the ball rolling.
And hopefully all twenty-two counties will make a Mercy Declaration, which will give a lot of ammo to the, to the cause.
And I believe they will. It's easy to get a declaration set up. You know, you know, so that's all they can hope for.
Anybody wanna read this thing, or you want me to?
I read it. Oh, you meant out loud, go ahead.
All right, here we go. I move we approve Resolution eleven dash twenty-one and proclaim, or proclamation, extreme severe cold weather emergency declaration. Proclamation of the state and local disaster emergency for Bourbon County, Kansas. Whereas on the seventeenth of February twenty twenty-one, the Board of County Commissioners, Kansas, finds that certain conditions have caused or imminently threatened to cause widespread or even severe damage, injury, or loss of life of property and disaster proportion in Bourbon County, Kansas. Whereas such conditions have created obstructions which endanger health, safety, and welfare of persons and property within the border of Bourbon County, Kansas. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Bourbon County, Kansas, that the Board of County Commissioners of Bourbon County, Kansas, under and by virtue of authority vested in it by K S A nineteen seventy-six supplemental forty-eight dash nine thirty-two, does hereby proclaim that the state of local disaster emergency exists. It is there, it is further resolved and proclaimed that the area within the border of Bourbon County, Kansas, is, is covered by this appropriation, proclamation resolution is, is the entire area of Bourbon County, Kansas. Be further resolved that said Bourbon, or Board has all rights and/or powers to perform such functions as are vested in said board by and through the provisions of Kansas Emergency Preparedness Act of nineteen seventy-five. It is further resolved and proclaimed that this resolution shall remain in effect for undisclosed number of days or unless determined earlier by the Board of County Commissions of Bourbon County, Kansas. Adopted by the Board of Bourbon County Commissioners the seventeenth day of February two thousand twenty-one. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
You all have to sign it.
Oh, thank you. Okay, uh, thank you, appreciate it. Kendall, do you need a copy of that?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, yeah, first thing in the morning, please. Quicker the better. I can do that too, okay?
How about taking a real short break?
Yeah, that's what I do.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Will.
Hi, Will.
Just more than you have to battle. What was it?
Bring my gas bill in.
You can bring your gas bill.
I spent, I spent yesterday afternoon doing some research on this issue, and it is pretty interesting.
I bet it is.
The small municipalities are in a nice spot.
If they are.
I've been serious, a nice spot. We're just gonna have to all convert electricity.
Yeah.
Wait for three.
Yeah, that's right, paying four. I'll go back here. I'll go see him. Well, there's one out here.
That's the point that some people, I think yesterday I was doing some research. But I understand that it was, it was. Have a bit of a.
Yeah.
You have to do that. That's a commissioner, commissioner can do that.
Yeah.
So who's gonna sit here for now? Same thing later on.
Not a great one, not a great day to happen.
Okay.
If I stay here more, I can have a wash today.
You can, you can walk outside over there and there's a wash. You can actually come out, come out this door and hit the green button and you get all this way to the wash. You can get, it's really easy to get out of this building, it's impossible to get in. It's really hard to get in this building. If you don't have those right little swipey thing, it's very frustrating. That's gonna get the incinerator out there. I wanna do that so bad.
Man.
At our own power. I, we could make millions and millions of dollars.
Who would think of mine built a sidetrack, get that truck in Kansas City?
It'd fall the world. Seriously, it should be a problem.
It'd be a goldmine.
I have a report to you guys for burning your own oil for me.
We used to have in our stove in the shop, we got the stove where it polluted when you quit. Now we give it to David Saker and he finds a lot more than he wants. Plus it's changed.
We've talked about that sometimes and I thought, I don't know if I'm gonna hear what the P A's about.
Well, all takes a lot of employees, they, the fumes bad, we got trouble. We're a discont.
With the, with the incinerators, we can haul in Norway, they all do, and they're raining traction from France. They have no issues at all. It started with all, and they burn everything, paint, oil, all of it, main household stuff.
Well, Limer standing on my scene, the first act was obviously what they could plan about.
Well, we, we learned, I mean, it helps some people that hire up the, the industry learns a lot. Who, because.
Yeah.
Different offices in, there's pictures of their toilets in a house completely frozen. And they actually push the bowl, you know, like the bowl. Blew it up, huge ice chunks, I mean, I couldn't believe it. And there's pictures in Dallas where there's like a six-story apartment, and it's raining all through the six stories because all the ice burst.
Are you guys gonna do anything for like the next ten days?
That's what I'm trying.
We'll wait until you come back.
Let me try to go to the spray.
They got, they got old pipe. You know, the potentially.
Kendall had to go, uh, science and love.
Well, she didn't wanna make a, a resolution she had time.
Yes, I didn't know if you knew that.
Maybe we can get that down.
Yeah.
So how's things going in your world?
Fine, fine, just.
Case is slowing down?
Mm-hmm.
It's not a tall.
Just slick and, you know, it's interesting.
But all, all it would take is someone actually going and say, look, have the money for one. Actually, it's a small incinerator, and this was a couple of years ago, only five million. But it sounds like a lot of money, but it's not. And the thing is, the power line, it's the other problem. They don't have a manager, the power line, they don't have a grid out there. Yeah, yeah, it's still, it's, it's still a little money. They wanna use it for, so this is kinda, you could do.
Twinkling? Oh, that's all we need to do. I think it's doing it everywhere.
Yeah, I think so.
I think, I think we may be on a downhill. I hope we don't get silly and try to.
See what happens in the spring.
Yeah.
I mean, that'll be the thing.
Well, we're, we're unique because we have our own station.
You know, what happens there?
You know, probably one of the only, we play on one of the municipalities in the states that can do it, that I think has the same infrastructure that we have. Cause we have the railyard, the spur, and we have, we have the ability to bury the potash because of our limestone. You know, and the, we wouldn't need the kind of environmentalists to bury the ash like other places would.
Yeah.
It'd work. Cause we have great rock here.
Yeah.
Linda, you see your brother much? We, we used to go once with, you been down lately?
No, since COVID happened, he doesn't get out much at all. I've seen him twice since, uh, maybe three times since that's happened. Saying we're close to home.
Fun guy.
I joined along with it.
He's fun. He's funny. But him and I, you know, we, we're pretty close. But like I say, it's COVID has really stopped a lot of people from interacting with their family.
It has.
Well, you know, he's seventy-eight.
I get my second shot through the weather.
Seventy-seven.
Through the weather.
And I get my second shot.
He was in Cincinnati.
Oh, yeah.
She gets her first one this Friday, so.
So, two weeks after you get your shot, you'll be good to go.
Yeah. I'm ready.
Justin, he's still hanging out waiting. He's down there in the bottom, bottom of the pile.
I talked to a judge today, we're on the next, the next wave, whatever the next level is, the court, court staff or.
I was talking to Joyce and, and they postponed hers till next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Cause people hadn't shown up.
Yeah, but I'm, it's, you know, for me with everything, I'm, I am really joyful that my mom has got, she gets her second one up in March. But I've been scared to death to get it, my mom's saying.
Oh, I bet.
Just scared to death.
And you should be.
She's got hypertension, she's, you know, tall, big, it's.
Well, I guarantee you, I was worried with kids in my house going in and out, going to school and coming home in the life, working at a childcare center. I was always worried about it.
Yeah, I'm taking care of, uh, another kid who's a college, great kid, you know, he's in college. I had, I had his brothers stay with me over Christmas break. I mean, I, I really, and I, I feel bad because I can't hug them, I can't, you know, interact like I usually do. I can't, you know, make dinner for them. I mean, I was like, my house was like COVID up.
Still out there though, you know? Cause I know I have a grandson that got quarantined here, uh, just last Thursday or Friday from exposure.
I got quarantined.
I know you did.
I had direct exposure and it was, it was really funny because the, the one person I would, would think that wouldn't have that contact or have that issue with, turned out to be that person. So it was just really strange. If anybody was gonna quarantine, I thought it was gonna be one of you guys.
I don't go anywhere.
Yeah.
Few, almost, well, we were so good, it was like fifty degrees that day, and we sat on the patio with barbecue.
Are we, just asking, are we, we're still in session, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure, I didn't want any violations.
No violations. Idle chit chat. Unless, unless idle chit chat's a violation.
No. We're just waiting for our next agenda and I'm.
At you.
We're waiting for Kendall to come back, though.
Yes, she got a resolution. I asked her to, for, for that land sale that they've already approved. They just have to take it for resolution number and go through it, so.
Get the plan just to state the six and see if anybody comes in for the late meeting, late evening meeting, is that what we're doing here?
Well, we'll stick around for a while.
Yeah.
Nobody shows up, we're out here.
Yeah. We try it.
Yeah. This wasn't once in a hundred year storm.
Yeah.
No, it really was. We broke one into a hundred years old.
Me, come on, these meetings like watching paint dry.
I hope it stops because I'm the, parents' farm just about out in Terry.
Oh, they're doing okay on salt, they may, they may, they might, they might put pots on, but I imagine they're getting real close on chips.
Yeah, that's what I meant, Jim, they got a lot of salt. Salt's my problem.
It looks like next week it's rain.
It's gonna warm up, yeah.
Yeah, fifty degrees rain.
Yeah.
So, we get right on. Think this is the coldest it's gotten for many, many years.
Yeah. Cold down.
I do remember when I was young, that we'd have to chop ice, and that ice would get real thick. So we had some cold, cold days back in the sixties.
Oh, yeah.
Real cold.
Remembering the nineties, cutting ice, cattle, it's cold.
Yeah, oh yeah, I remember cutting, said it was over a foot, for sure. I'm gonna use a twenty-inch bow, change. My boy cut ice this morning, he said it was at least seven inches. I go ice fishing. This week it warms up, I probably will.
Yeah, I was surprised, I was out at a little bit before five, and it was warmer than I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah, felt warm.
Yeah.
No wind.
Because I know when I was at five, day four yesterday, it was cold, it's out for a while.
Yeah, it's been cold upriver. I heard that five truck go by at four o'clock tomorrow, and I rolled over and smiled. Sorry.
Well, like I say, they.
Welcome to retirement.
Yeah, they, they rolled by my place for the greater last night, about six-thirty, and they were out to at least seven.
Yeah.
And they still didn't get finished. Of course, they got a late start because, because of, oh, diesel was gelling up.
Yeah.
One of those things that happens. I think we, now, I think we got one more thing on here. That's the twenty-twenty audit. Uh, Susan's still here?
Uh, she might be.
I need to find out because there's a, we need to kind of discuss that a little bit.
I wanna bring that up.
Huh?
Meeting tomorrow.
Or.
Somebody run the door, a lot of people in, if anybody comes.
What's that?
The door, the door's locked. I didn't think about that.
I can do my thing real quick and go around here and say. I can do my thing real quick and go around here and say.
Cut.
Okay. All right. I think I missed one on there. It's the twenty twenty audit.
I want, I want.
Well, and that's where, when we want to do it. Um, I wanted to have some input from Susan on that.
Yeah.
So we can bring it up probably next week.
I was gonna talk a little bit about that and then kind of get a timeline on some things with regards to that issue. Um, Susan and I have a meeting tomorrow morning. We're meeting, uh, at eight thirty tomorrow morning to talk about some overtime issues that have come up, uh, recently. We're gonna check the handbook, come up kind of with the consensus and then come back to the commission next week, um, to kind of discuss those matters. We're also gonna talk about, um, you know, obviously we're not unique, um, with our region or even the state. Um, even Sedgwick County closed their courthouse down yesterday. Um, so, uh, most of the courthouses in southeast Kansas closed. And so we have to kind of look at, going back in time, we did, we've done this once before. I think it was two thousand seventeen, we had a weather event. And we had, um, you know, emergency personnel have to come in, road and bridge, sheriff, corrections. So we'll get a consensus with Susan and I and talk that through and then talk to Kendall and try to figure out, to make sure we're all on the same page with that also.
Okay.
That meeting tomorrow, we have, uh, it's gonna probably be about an hour, hour and a half with another individual to discuss some personnel matters that hopefully we don't have to, um, bring up to the commission. But if so, we'll go in an executive session next week and, and deal with those matters also. So those are my three things. We got a lot of, um, internal policies that we're working on. We did have a, you know, an update to the handbook. Um, we'll try to get maybe that into function and get it indexed and things like that too. So just a matter of time on task kind of thing. And so it's a matter of having that time and getting on task with those issues. But all three things are personnel at this point. We got a little core issue, um, coming out of Clint's office, but it's just a matter of how much, how much it's gonna cost to get those things done and what they're gonna use with that data once, once we get it to them. So I'm gonna meet with him tomorrow too and kind of try to figure out what that is and make those steps. Just kind of keeping updated on what I've been doing, on what Susan's been doing. I, I'm very grateful for Susan. I mean, I am. I'm not saying that. I mean, it's.
So am I.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we have a lot, a lot of things that we're trying to get into like the twenty-first century, basically, trying to figure out, you know, the ins and outs. So it's mostly a business management type stuff that we gotta work out. I'm a lawyer. I'm not a CFO type at all. Not, I like math, but not, I'm not in love with it.
Here, I'll come back and make a recommendation or move forward according to the handbook, of course, overtime.
Yes, we absolutely are. Yeah, we gotta, and really the other thing too, a designation, I mean, I think Commissioner O'Hare or Chairman O'Hare had to make a unilateral decision for emergency declaration to shut the courthouse down. I think we gotta, you know, maybe make someone, see, I think you can, I know you can make a designation. And hopefully we don't have to do that very often. I met so once and, um, I can think of the courthouse being closed twice in my career and I've been doing it for twenty-one years. So it's a pretty rare event. And I hope we don't have another, like, I hope we don't have another storm like this next year. Knock on fake wood, but. But those are the things that we're working on.
I know, I know, just from my wife's business, she shut it down and, and contacted everyone and no one was gonna bring their kids anyway.
Right. I think yesterday was a pretty dangerous situation. We had power problems. We had people in our county that were getting through the rolling blackout. We didn't know if this county courthouse was gonna, this building was gonna be in that part of that blackout. We had amazingly cold temperatures and like I said, you are not unique. I mean, actually, most of the southern counties, Crawford, um, Woodson, you know, show, they actually didn't have their courthouses open today. So you're now unique actually in our region for being open. I know Lynn County was and.
I'd, I'd call around and seeing who was going to close. And of course, the determining factor was when, when, uh, the wife loaded up and hit it to the deck.
Well, it was almost balmy this morning at eleven degrees. The sun was out. It almost felt like it was warm.
I was at about five four, or four forty-five and I couldn't believe the difference.
Well, I, I think I finally understand where people in Minnesota can wear shorts when it's twenty degrees out. I mean, I'm not kidding. I just, I never, always wondered how they did that, but now it makes sense. So. And just one, one other little quick thing too, the, we're slowly trickling the, um, through the tax sale. I've gotta get down to Pittsburgh. I wanna take Patty and, to go down and talk about that and kind of meet with their people to kind of make sure we're all on the same page and that Patty's comfortable, because that's important, that the treasurer understands.
So, uh, your little time slot here, I'd still like to talk about the, the twenty twenty audit timeframe. I don't think we're, we're ready for it yet. So we can bring it up maybe next week?
Absolutely. It will absolutely come up next week.
Okay, very good.
It'll absolutely come up next week. We have some internal questions that we're trying to get answered now.
Okay.
About just going through, I'm gonna get, just give it to Susan and learn.
Got some cleanup work we're trying to do too.
Yes. Not yet.
Not yet. Last year was pretty late.
We're gonna be, I'm feeling, you know, Patty, everyone is working really hard right now to work on some, you know, issues that we've had for the last couple of years to get those cleaned up and everyone get on the same page so that we don't have to, you know, like Terry Serser said, keep dealing with the same issue year in and year out. So we're working on it. And that's why you guys hired Susan, to, to help everyone kind of figure out a better way to do business. It wasn't wrong before. It just wasn't the most, you know, economic and the most time-saving process. I'm really looking forward to the budget cycle this year to see how that goes, because I think it's gonna.
I am too.
Be interesting.
Think it's gonna be different.
Yep.
We have a lot, I think the input's gonna be a lot different was, has been in the past.
Well, and some of the things that we.
Because Susan will board you, help you through that process.
And some of the things that we've been talking about for years about once the budget's passed, giving that control over to the elected official. You know, and allowing them to manage their budget the way that I've always envisioned it. And hopefully with Susan's help, we can help that process even work better.
Yep.
That's just my ideologies. That's nothing, that's an opinion.
Right.
But I think as an elected official, it would be awesome to say, here's my budget, here's what you got. And then.
And it's not that way currently?
On some levels, it's not because you, you don't, sometimes don't, day in, day out, you don't know exactly how much money you have. You know, there's problems with.
As far as them hiring somebody though, or giving raises?
We had a hiring freeze and we still do, but we might be able to lift that hiring freeze and say.
About raises or take money away from an individual?
Raises are, raises are really interesting. It's actually a fascinating mantra. I mean, Kendall obviously has to have a resolution to pay that person. So, you know, I've always advocated when I was an elected official, saying, I'm the elected official. Here's what I think is best for my department, you know, give me authority. And that necessarily didn't happen at that time because the commission obviously is responsible for the budget. And we don't want to have any cash basis violations, but you know, someone actually felt comfortable with the budget and had that person or resource to kind of fall back on and say, hey, can I do X, Y, and Z? Because right now we're, I mean, it's not Patty's job to manage an elected official's budget. So she's got, she's got enough, you know, on her plate to actually sit down with Road and Bridge or the sheriff and go, hey, can I do this with my budget? Because I've always thought that would be really a good thing to do for an elected official to kind of get the actual, what it looks like and how it works and.
Well, and the other part, you know, we were looking at, uh,
And then one more.
When we are doing the budget, we also need the, these departments to, to understand what is costing them for employee benefits.
Right. Well, and there's some, I think Commissioner Beth is touching on something really interesting. Like, if you take away from one part of a budget, you know, like your contractuals, and you want to give raises instead of buying the widget, I think the elected official can come in and go, hey, I'd rather give raises than buy a new car or a pallet of paper or whatever. I mean, and, but, and then maybe getting that ID, ideology too, where it's a long-term investment. Because, you know, you can buy that car on the front end and not give the raises. And see, and also, we haven't been able to do the projections on what it looks like ten years out. So that's, that's the problem. We had that with longevity pay. We had to spend a lot of time looking at what it looked like ten years from now. And, you know, obviously that's hard to manage when you don't have the math brain. Because it, it has a huge impact. Every time you give someone longevity pay, you know, five years looks different than ten and ten looks different than fifteen. You know, obviously we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know who's gonna be here, but you still have to.
Have to figure that out. You always have to watch, to follow the next year's budget.
Yeah, and then we have a sick leave issue and a vacation time issue that we have always had some math questions on. I think, I don't think that can be done right now, but we have some people in our organization that we have to look at what it looks like to pay off unused vacation time and unused sick leave and how that, the budget is impacted. And the other thing that we know we have had in, not in place is having enough carryover for the holy cow moment. I mean, it shouldn't just be the general fund. It should actually be each department having that holy cow moment money to make sure that they're, they're sustainable.
Good question, Justin.
And that's a lot of planning on the commission's part, a lot.
If the elected officials go forward working with Susan on pay raises.
Well, if they, if they want, if they want.
If they want to.
If they want to work with Susan, they don't have to.
If they over budget, are they responsible or the commission over?
Say that one more time. I'm sorry.
If they're over budget at the end of the year, are they responsible? The county commission responsible?
I think, I think, I think in the past.
We are.
Yeah, in the past, yeah, but in the past, it was hard to answer that question. You, it, it was hard because of the way sometimes the, the tracking of the budget was sometimes difficult. I think that if it was in a perfect world, the commission would be legally responsible for the overs, but nobody that would be elected would want to have a no fund warrant. I mean, they would, politically would, I mean, I would say politically would damage their political career.
And the budget, the budgets we've done so far and the way we set this up, Road and Bridge is really the one that, that takes the brunt of this as far as accountability, because, because you, your budget is, is sent.
Well, Road and Bridge, as we talked earlier, number one, we don't know really what we're getting quarterly from the state. So that budget number is hypothetical.
Right.
We don't know what we're getting. And when a motor grader goes down, it's forty-eight thousand dollars. There's no way to plan on that.
Right.
Within reason.
Right. Well, I, I think the, the sheriff's always been really good about talking about the unknowns. You know, Bobby Reed's been really good about this too, about, we don't know what food costs are. We don't know what gas prices are gonna be. I mean, it's gone up thirty cents, you know, so, but, but one of the things that you should have in your budget is a reserve. And, and you know, as a taxpayer, I don't like huge reserves because that money should be going to use. But having a reserve for that rainy day fund where you're not having to, you know, have the emergency moments, which we've had. We, we had one a couple of years back where it got really uncomfortable with some things that happened with pers, you know, with personnel issues, with just paying insurance. And no mistake of anybody's, it just happened. And so we gotta go through that process and make sure that doesn't happen again. So.
Yep.
But it's tough. It, it, it's not fun to tighten the belt. And we, you guys have done a great job of being fiscally conservative over the last couple of years. It might be time to get those reserves built up now and then hopefully down the road. You don't, you have additional money to spend. Like, another really good example would be the jury fund money or the murder fund. You know, instead of carrying it over every year and putting it back into the general fund, I've always wanted to have that money put in and have that quarter of a million or three hundred thousand dollars in that side fund. And then you could take the money that you were putting in back into the general fund and using that for other matters like Road and Bridge or whatever. So that's just a difference of ideologies.
You mentioned the perfect world. We'll get up with Susan here, right?
There's no pressure.
No pressure at all for her.
I'll make recommendations.
Recommendations is all she can make.
I understand.
And, and elected officials that they don't want to work with her, they don't have to. I just think that, why not? I mean, it's just another resource that
Yeah.
could be helpful. And if they don't like what she has to say, then they don't have to listen to it. I mean, it's just a matter of time on task. Because sometimes budgets become, and they're, they could get trickier as time goes on too. Things could get more expensive. And we're trying to lower property taxes. That's our goal.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's my goal setting here.
Yeah.
Is to lower property taxes.
Yep.
And we had to, it's all done by control and spending.
Right.
Well, we still have to provide services.
We do.
I mean, and services cost money.
Right. Others.
You can't, you can't, you know, that rock on the road in front of, well, I have pavement in front of my house. It's not free.
Right.
But I've often wondered.
Or the gravel's not free.
I've often wondered really what services are really important to some of our citizens. They don't tell us sometimes.
Well, I guarantee you, if you let their rich.
Well.
Call a pardon, they'd be calling you real quick.
I, you know, I, I go back, I go back, you know, this, none of you are on this, none of you are on this board. You know, it was, it was a question that's actually haunted me for now, almost going on eight years, is, you know, what is the primary function of the county? You know, it, it was, Commissioner asked that question and it, I've always been spellbound by it on some levels because I know it's rock on the road and pavement. But, you know, that primary function in my mind has changed dramatically over the last three years. And so, you know, what's it look like five years from now? And I think having someone like Susan's gonna help us be in a place where we can make some bigger decisions on what it looks like. And how, how do you get there?
One of the, you know, you and I spent the last six years, now going on seven, looking at data. And, uh, when, when you look at, at what really changed that dynamic when we started showing that the, the loss of population in this county and what, what the impact that was gonna have on our, our, uh, revenue to do the services that we wanted to do.
Yeah, it, it was, you know, you look back at eighteen, I mean, I hate to go back to eighteen seventy, but really from eighteen ninety on, we've had a lot, a declining population since eighteen ninety. And it's not, it's not negative news. It's not being overly dramatic. It's just the reality of what's happened in Burman County. I mean, and services cost money. And so if you have a declining population, you want to keep the same services, the only way to make that up is to spending additional tax dollars. But the cap, the cap has a profound impact on you guys and how you do your job.
Yes, it does.
Profound, profoundness, actually.
And I'm not promoting this type of service, but we all hear how low the property taxes are in Vernon County.
Mm-hmm.
Move to Vernon County, Vernon County. But look at their roads. They look like my driveway, but those folks don't care.
Well, you know, Missouri is actually really interesting. You can't compare Kansas to Missouri. It's not apples for apples. And I'll, I'll, if you, if you got five minutes. So Vernon County is fascinating to me because it's right across, it's six miles from here. Their property taxes are less, their car tags are less. But the state of Missouri has a population mass, I think of over thirteen million, or it's like twelve million for sure. I'm rounding down or up. The state of Kansas right now, I think it's like two point seven million. So the St. Louis metro area actually has more people than the whole state of Kansas does. And so people matter when it, they're paying into the mass, they're paying into that pool that is distributed just like the state of Kansas from the state level and it floats down. So, you know, their, their highways are funded differently, you know, in, in Missouri than they are in Kansas. I mean, KDOT is a big part of our funding mechanism where I think in Missouri, it's more regional or even actually more local. So.
If I was really making more reference to their gravel roads, the people accept it, the condition of them. And they're, they're pretty rough.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a quality of life issue that you discussed. I mean, do you, we have a real, I think we, I love it here. We have a really good quality of life. I think we have a, we have great roads. All things considered, I think the national data says that we're easily in the top ten for infrastructure on roads in the country compared. I mean, I think Kansas, last time I looked, was like number seven. I'll look that up again because I haven't looked at that in a while. But we were easily in the top ten, but we spent a lot of money per, per capita. We're, we're up there.
I had a crew that worked for me out of El, El Dorado, El Dorado Springs.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I go over there once in a while. You never went over there when it rained.
Yeah. Well, and going back to something else that Commissioner Harris talked about, it, it is a very symbiotic relationship that we have in the state. Because the way our USDs are funded, the way our community colleges are funded, the way our colleges are funded, I mean, our, a big portion of the state's budget is education, which, you know, obviously coming from where I come, you know, my parents and my grandparents and all that and myself, I mean, education is, is huge. I mean, it's not the be all, end all, but it's important. And so when your budget is directly into one thing, sometimes it's hard to, because there are secondary roads. And in our county, it would be awesome if we could get some state funding. But it's tough. So it's just, it's, you know, it, I, I, I'm actually fascinated by Commissioner Harris on some levels. I can't wait to see what the budget process will be for you this year because you've been so involved in the county through Road and Bridge. And now you get to see, I mean, I think you have always seen the big picture, but you get to see the.
I do.
And so to me, it's gonna be interesting to get your personal. Because I'd like to see, I've always seen like, where would you, if I was in your seat, where would I cut if I had to?
Yeah.
Because you need, you know, you need the fair. You need, I mean, all the things that Clifton was talking about, like what services do you cut? that Clifton was talking about, like, what services do you cut?
Well, and this commission's got some important decisions going forward for small crusher, I mean, are we...
Healthcare.
Are we going to change anything, are we going to reduce our services on gravel roads, or asphalt roads, for a dollar-wise, I, you know, I know the sales tax has passed, but that's only so many miles a year, but with this small crusher, as Lynn knows, and I'm sure Clifton does by now, we've been chasing material for years and years, trying to keep up with the needs out there, so...
Well, I think Ms. Holdridge has got a really good starting point, you know, we've, we've found, I, I call them ghost roads, I don't know what other nickname you could call them, but roads that, you know, it looks like we might own, or are supposed to maintain that we don't, and other roads that we shouldn't be maintaining, I mean, there's, there's not a whole lot, but there's enough to where it, it's a good starting point, and so...
And that's what that, that exercise is all about, is trying to identify really what we head for roads, you know, and then you look at the map there, and that's a state map, and it has already designated the, the roads and how they were to be maintained...
Right.
Back in, back when that was produced, and that was in the 40s, I do, do believe.
Well, and just talking about some other things that are universal, Susan and I really gotta work on the sanitation district out the lake, and then you got the fire districts, I mean, it's just, there's just so many things to talk about, that are part of the taxing, because no matter what you, in my, I would probably be careful of this statement, but no matter what, you're paying taxes in everything you use, cell phones, water, electricity, sewer, I mean, so it's a real big question on where you're, you know, plus, where you're putting your money at, but where are the best bang for your buck, too, you know? Because I think, to me, an ER is really valuable, and if it came between a landfill and the ER, I mean, I know where my, I know where I'd want as a citizen, where my opinion would go, but...
Sure.
But then it gets interesting, is it, you know, ER, or, you know, an extra 20 miles of paved road, or, and then it gets kinda fascinating to go down that thought process.
Yeah, we gotta have an ER.
Right. But see, the thing is, you guys have no utility, you're not, the only way you raise money is through taxing people. I mean, the landfill doesn't make money, I want people to know, we're not making...
Yeah, dude, no.
We are not making money on the landfill.
Like the crawl can that's going out in the real area right now, why don't we have a franchise fee?
You know, I've actually, was asked that question pretty recently ago, I'm gonna do some research on that, I think, I don't know, I, I think I know the answer, but I don't wanna give the wrong answer, so I'll look into that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
But that's a tax.
I know it's a tax.
All day long, I mean, that's my opinion, you're tackin', that's a, you're taking money out of a taxpayer's pocket and...
Yeah.
Using it for, I mean, you can lower the property taxes, I guess the use tax might be different than a property tax, I mean, that'd be a way to, you know, cycle through that, and the use taxes, by, by, I mean, in my opinion, is used by everybody, where, oh, someone trying to come in? I need you to set the door, we're just bantering about.
Okay.
Here we are.
Thank you.
I'll go and sit.
You next, Susan.
Public comment.
Well, go ahead and finish this resolutions.
Oh.
We'll have to assign the table of the resolution.
For the position of GIS tech and for apprenticeship.
For what?
The GIS technician and the apprenticeship.
Okay. There you go, yeah, okay, this is resolution 12, Dex 21? For the GIS IT position, and the apprenticeship position, and I move we approve it.
Second it.
And it, did I say this, resolution 12, 21? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, guys, get all, get to sign this one.
So is that the GIS technician, is that a position with benefits, or is it a salary position with benefits?
Yeah, it's a salary position.
With benefits?
Is that all of them?
Yes, I have the A, A, E that you took earlier.
These?
Yes.
We've got these, haven't got them signed yet. All right, commissioners. Any comments?
No, during the break, Lynn, Justin and I was talking, and I think it's something, I know you've worked hard on it past, and I think it's something that we should look at again, especially with this power shortage we're having, there's been some discussion in the years past to have an incinerator at the landfill, of the revenue it could generate to help lower taxes, or be a backup for Evergy, or whoever. So I think in the future, I'd like to have Justin get more involved in that, because, you know, we're this close to Kansas City, we could receive a lot of their trash and bring it in, there's so much a ton, and we burn it, because it takes a state permit, and it's hard to get, but I think something we should look at again for the future, because I think there's enough revenue, though, that really would impact our property tax.
You could. Well, you can look into it again, I know, the last time we, we did it, there was no way that we could get any kind of permit or help from the federal government at all.
Yeah, but hopefully, times are changing, I think it's worth looking at again, I mean, most they're gonna do is tell us no, but we wanna know why this time more, and really opened up a lot of opportunities for making, I hate to say making money, but saving tax
I'd say it's worth something looking at, it's worth looking into.
If we looked at it once, we can look at it again.
Yep. It's a very, it would, it would take federal help, but take multiple things.
Yeah, it's, it has to be federally approved.
The last one Justin looked at was about $6 million.
I think they're...
Probably doubled by now, probably.
Yeah, at least doubled down.
Probably.
But regardless, they pay for themselves in...
Oh, yeah.
In a year.
And we have a facility out there, and we have a railroad track right there at the facility.
Yeah.
There might be some opportunity there.
Yep.
So that's all I have for our discussion, so...
Yep.
I was planning on some big report from Susan, but she didn't, she's not coming forward.
Next week.
Next week? I will say, this is just my, I don't know, third or fourth meeting, but I've enjoyed being on the commission so far, so...
Only thing I haven't enjoyed was yesterday.
Well, I think it's a commission we can, we can agree to disagree, so...
You bet.
That's important, so...
It's the way it works.
Yep.
But not, it's not good just to have a total of the estimation at all.
Nope.
I need to find...
I hadn't raised a hand, though.
Very well.
Yeah, I can't believe you wrote that down all ago. Yeah, I can.
Gave me something to laugh at, anyway, in there.
Yeah, gotta have a little humor in it.
Quit thinking about her, my back hurting.
This could be nine o'clock.
So that's, uh, next week, is that right?
Next week, nine o'clock, City Hall.
City Hall, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I don't have anything really, the only thing I have to tell you, I'm working with Susan and Cheyenne Bicycle to finish up our, our audit and issues we had at the landfill, there's some, we're still looking at some billing that, that we need to finish up on, and I think we're making some good progress.
Good.
I did meet with three different departments, and conversations went really well, as far as reviewing their budgets for 2020, and, and going through expenditures and things like that, and I feel like we've had some, some good progress there, so, three different departments.
Now, I think Susan's gonna be sending out some information to us here before long, or really, really, I think it'd be really beneficial to us.
Yeah.
Good.
I haven't seen it, so when you see it, I'll see it.
That is true.
I'm glad they're cooperating with you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's important. And we all know, we need your experience over here to make some improvements, so...
Yeah, yep, I'm, that's what I'm here to, just to help.
Also say, from my time here, I'm sure sorry you didn't get to go on vacation.
I know, it was, it was such a crazy thing, um, yeah, I was hoping I'd get a few days on the beach, and it didn't happen, so, flew to Houston and flew home.
Due to the weather?
Yes, due to the weather. We had mechanical issues at first, on our plane, and then when we got back, we missed our connecting flight, and so, that's, so we just spent a lot of time in the airport.
Yeah, been there and done that before. I was in Dallas from Mr. Reagan, and air people went on strike.
Oh, gosh.
I was in Dallas, Texas, a long time, before I got a flight, air traffic controllers went on strike that day.
Oh, gosh, that's not good.
Had a long time ago. Anything, Clifton?
No, no, just...
I hope Swab Eden comes forward with that report on that bridge.
Well, they got the, I'm sure they will, they're, they've got the documentation we sent.
When they get the, I mean, I guess we're waiting on a book, or whatever.
Well, I'll look and see if I have that book in my house, I mean, there was like six of those books, so look.
Well, I don't know where that thing went.
Well, I know each commissioner had one at one time.
Well, I think there's one in this locked drawer that I can't get into.
I'll look back there in my, back in my, I don't know, I don't know, man.
He didn't leave anything, Jeff didn't leave anything here.
We just talked about you.
You need the Bible, or the, I shouldn't call the Bible, but...
What?
They agreed that we want to start moving forward, talking incinerators. Good, I'll get, I'll pull my old file and get some back work on it.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see if there's any attitudes changed on a fly-in.
Okay.
What do you guys need?[1683.08]